It's seven o'clock. I would like to welcome all of those who came tonight. And hereby call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the rule?
Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Here.
And I'll note Chair Carwin is absent.
Okay, thank you. Like everyone to stand and join with me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, are there any agenda modifications?
No, sir.
Does the commission have any comments pertaining to the agenda? Hearing none? Do we have any? Okay, hearing none. Let's see. Are there any presentations?
We do not have presentations this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments, sir.
Okay. Do we have any comments pertaining to the minutes from the last meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion has been...
Yeah, I ask all in favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to...
We're good.
Okay. The minutes are approved. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Next item would be the approval of the meeting minutes.
Oh.
We already did that, okay. We have any comments concerning the consent calendar?
There are no items on the consent calendar.
Okay. Public hearings, I understand the public hearing from last meeting is still open?
Yes, sir. The item was left open at the last meeting.
Do we have any public testimony as far as what's going on?
I have no testimony at this time, but you'll want to call for the staff report at this time.
Okay, yes. Do we have a staff report? I'm sorry about that.
Yes, we do. Christina Bustamante has a short staff report on the item.
Good evening. And I will be continuing the item that we had from the January 13th meeting, which is the ARCO sign program. And so the plot plan proposes a sign program that includes a wall-mounted signs on the south and west sides of the building, and a 25-foot-tall pylon sign. And the Planning Commission, we continued it from the January 13th, 2016 hearing, and it was continued to a date certain, which is today, and with the findings for approval and resolution for approval. And just to go quickly, to refresh the memory on the signs that we're doing, here's the site plan that we have, and the signs that are there on the westerly side and southerly side of the building, and also the canopy itself where the fuel be dispersed, and the monument sign. And then these are the elevations of those signs and what they're going to look like. And they are the side elevations here. And here's the canopy signs and how that will look. And then this is the 25-foot sign. And there are no electronic displays going in at this time. Although, there is a condition of approval being included into this particular project to state, or rather to allow, the applicant to install digital fuel pricing once the sign program is amended here and revised to permit that. And so, from that, we, I recommend conducting the public hearing and adopting resolution PC 16-250, approving plot plan number 2015-237 for the signage based upon the findings and conditions incorporated in the staff report and resolution.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion from the commissioners?
I do have a question for staff. The previous meeting, we, the staff was recommending not approving the sign. And I just want to confirm that this meeting you are recommending to approve it?
That is correct.
No questions?
Okay. I would like to...
Let's see.
Ask the applicant if they would like to speak.
Approving the 25. And as we discussed last time, we like to go for the 45. And I have two design, I would like to show you, for the 45.
Put it under the dock.
And as I mentioned before, I put space for future tenants in the whole...
Madam Secretary. With that, right now, there's just...
Just the ARCO.
Just the ARCO and the Jack-in-the-Box. But is, does that parcel, or a neighboring parcel, have plans for development?
I'm trying to purchase it.
Okay.
As we speak.
So...
And I believe in the past, I brought you guys a plan where I want to try to put, like, other restaurants, which is, I know you guys not fan of fast food. I'm trying to bring Golden Corral to the area.
Okay.
And I'm trying to maybe a hotel over there, a nice hotel. That's what I'm trying to do.
And so the intent would be those, the other parcels at future development would be, have space on this?
Exactly.
Okay.
And if you recall, Ron, Mr. Ron was here last time. He's the real estate agent representing me in the purchase.
One thought, can we, staff question is being that this would be larger than normally desirable by the commission if some kind of condition could be put in there that in the future, it sounds like his intent is there, but that the adjacent parcels would have a legal ability to advertise on the sign. So it's more of a area sign than just an ARCO sign. Do you know what I'm saying? Do you intend of what I'm trying to say there? So keep that in mind.
Can we add that to the conditions of approval, or is it too late?
Well, we don't have an application in yet for a 45-foot sign. So today, all we're dealing with is the 25-foot sign. In the future, when we get that application, then, based on what we've heard from the commission thus far, we can add that in as a potential condition of approval.
So tonight, we'll just, if the commission feels we'll approve this, and then he'll have to come back with an amended sign program, then?
Yeah, so the application for the commission tonight is for 25-foot sign. The one that we're seeing right now is a 45-foot, which potentially there will be another application for, but we obviously can't act on the 45-foot one yet.
So does this mean that the 25-foot, that he would have to resubmit for the extra 20 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Do you understand that...
I do understand, but what's the process on this? What's, you know, the process? Because we're almost done. We're ready to open.
You can certainly come and talk to staff. We will be happy to outline the process for you. It's going to be fairly similar to what you went through as a process as far as your current signs. But we would be happy to meet with you and outline all the details.
Would it be more cost-efficient and administratively efficient to continue this and have him modify it? Or would you, as staff, rather approve this and redo it, have him do it again?
We spoke about this last time. And we suggested that the applicant go through with this sign, get the approval, and then he can come in again with a new application. So nothing's changed since then, although...
Okay.
He's obviously very forward-thinking that he already has the, the design.
So are you saying the applicant was supposed to file an application from the last time he was here for tonight?
If he, if the applicant wanted a 45-foot sign, he has to submit an application for it. That hasn't been done yet. But the applicant was aware of that from the last meeting. All that, all that we can approve tonight is a 25-foot sign.
I thought we agreed to get the 25, and to think if we would like to go for 45. I spoke with Jack-in-the-Box, and they say, yes, they are very happy to hear that, and they want to go for it. And that's when we went, sorry, yeah. When we went and we designed this. So we made two design. At least, I can represent it to you guys where you look at it, you say, okay, it looks good, but we need to fill the application. And we don't think it's going to be a denial. We think will be all right. Then we can spend the money on the design. The design is going to take time and money.
So what is...
With the application, too.
What is the downside to continuing this and letting him amend his application? Resubmit, submitting that, and then a new staff report generated, and then we review it. Doesn't mean we're going to approve it, just means we want to see this sign in the, in the package, and we do that. What is the downside to doing that versus approving the 25 and making him apply again?
It's really just a question about what he would like to do. If he wants to continue it, and the Planning Commission is agreeable to that, he certainly can do that.
It'll take additional time for the new application to come forward and for staff to process it.
And he may have to increase his deposit.
Yeah.
So you understand that?
Absolutely. So that's...
It works off a deposit basis, so you're going to incur more staff time, which you have to reimburse the city for. But is there any benefit to doing it this way, just continuing it, or approving and redoing it? Is there any downside either way?
I mean, the benefit of doing it this way, as it sounds, is though the Planning Commission will approve this, and the applicant will then have one approval in hand, which is better than having none and hoping for the Planning Commission's...
Understand.
Blessing later on. So it's ultimately up to the applicant what he wants to do.
Do you understand that...
I do understand.
Just in case we had heartburn that night, and we don't want a 45-foot sign, you don't have an approval?
At all.
At all, if we continue this?
Then we give the 25.
Okay, that's what he's suggesting. You have less heartburn that way. Does that make sense?
Hundred percent.
And I don't, I don't think the, the difference in fees is much. Is there a difference in cost to them?
Certainly, there will be a difference in cost, because the 45-foot sign would have to be reviewed and analyzed and looked at. So there's staffing costs that would be incurred from that.
So it's my understanding that, from what you've indicated now, you would be amenable to the 25-foot sign as presented to the commission, and then come back later with your amended modifications? Okay, I think I understand where you're coming from. Okay, thank you. Do we have any more comments?
I do have one comment, just to give some background in the review for this particular monument sign and where it's located. And just to give some idea, in increasing the size, there was significant difficulty in placing the sign where it's at now from the engineering perspective. There are some easements that are located there that would make it difficult to move the sign from where it is now to make it bigger. So there are some challenges that we would have to discuss with engineering moving forward if the sign were to be made larger. So just to kind of give some food for thought.
So the setback on the 45 is not sufficient where it is right now?
The setback is not necessarily the issue. It's just that there's an easement there from a different agency that's not ours that we have to keep in mind. And unfortunately, I'm not quite qualified to speak on engineering's behalf, but I do know that that was a concern from engineering.
Yeah, but in the meantime, my engineer designed it. This one that I have is the same, no different in the size. The other one is a little bit bigger. And he knows all what you guys concerned. And he know it should be okay, based on him. You know what I mean?
So you're saying the footprint of the existing sign, you're thinking engineering-wise, would be fine where it is?
And then he make another design, which is this one. It's a little bit wider, but it's a lot...
Well, that'll have to go through engineering, too.
Yeah, your footing on the sign's going to be a lot bigger. So I think that's where it starts encroaching into the easement, so. And you can do pile footings or something, so you have options. Costly, but options.
I have a question. Is this sign, is this a standard ARCO sign? Or is this one we've seen comparatively? I see 45 feet, but I don't see...
I see 75, too.
Don't push your luck.
No, no. I'm...
And ask for 75 and be happy with 45.
I know.
Okay, thank you.
Are we doing commissioner comments right now, or are we still doing staff?
No, we got to close.
Okay. Do we have any other comments, concerns? Want to go ahead and close them? Close the public hearing and entertain a discussion from the commissioners?
You obviously had some commissioner...
Well, I'll go first. I mean, I made these nice little pretty exhibits today, so. I guess my, my biggest concern, you know, looking at the aerial one, yes, the one you see on the screen now. You know, I believe it's the soil retention building, which you can see. And I'm just concerned about the visibility of it. And I mean, and that's my biggest issue, because, I mean, I understand the need to see the sign get off the freeway. So the little red dot is where my rough assumption is where it is. And then you got to go around the building, the soil retention building, to put you on the 215 with the blue line ends. And you have about 900 feet to the gore of the exit ramp, which isn't much time. And you're almost looking at a 90-degree angle in order to see the sign.
Being in that area, whatever you can get, that's great.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, and then, I was looking, if you're coming southbound, which is the top of the screen, so right at the gore of the off-ramp, you can see how far away that is. And then by roughly guessing the angle of the sign, you're going to be looking at the side of the sign. You're not even going to be able to see what the sign is. So that's why, I don't know if it's worth putting some signs on the side of it, but I don't think you're going to get any visibility of marketing from the southbound direction.
I understand.
Before you hit the freeway off-ramp.
Yeah. What happened, Ron tried with a crane. He explained that to you guys last time.
Right, yeah.
To him. Based on him, I did not see it. I was not involved in that. It was Jack-in-the-Box and him, and one of my staff. And they think it's worth that.
Yeah, and I just question if, the visibility, if you're actually going to, especially in the southbound direction in order to get off on the freeway. So that's kind of, I had those thoughts last time, so this time I actually sat down and did. And then the other exhibit's just a Googler shot.
I understand.
Once you get past the thing, so.
Good job.
But I don't know. I mean, that's my biggest concern. If we're going to throw a big old sign up, you better be able to see it.
That's true.
And that's why I question the size of the sign. Because if you, I mean, I understand you, you want your marketing. So that's where, and that's why I wanted to make sure that staff was recommending the 25-foot sign, which was different than last time. So that's why I wanted to clarify that. So these are just the two thoughts that went through my head last meeting, and I actually spent some time, and I even drove it, and you still can't. I don't know. I'm just a little concerned about the height of it and the, not really the ice. It's a beautiful sign, it's well done, I love the stone, so. You know, like I said, just coming southbound, I don't even know if you're going to see it. So that's just some thoughts that I've had.
Any other comments? I actually agree with Commissioner Doty on that. My initial reaction was, where are you going to put this sign as far as the footprint? Because you're going to be very close to your tanks, if I'm not mistaken. Oh. Okay. Looking at this diagram, I was looking at the yellow circle. Is that where that sign is going to be? Yeah, right here on the corner. You're going to put a 45-foot sign there. Yeah, your tanks are right on the other side of that.
The tanks inside. I, I know what I'm telling you. In here, maybe, yeah, that's the tanks over there.
Yeah, these are the tanks right here.
There is a quiet distance between them. It's not going to affect the tanks at all.
I was thinking about...
And the 45, I'm telling you, if you look at these two, drop, like, and work in here. See, this is the bigger one, okay? And that's the original one, the same as the 25. Same, no different.
Okay.
So it's two feet, one from here, one from there. It's not going to get near the tanks at all.
Okay. The engineer doesn't have a problem with that?
He doesn't want to waste his time and my time. The only thing is, you know, before we start moving forward on the 45, if you guys, like, kind of give us, like, an idea.
I'm going to have problems kind of doing 45. I mean, the 20, I'll give you a 25 mainly because staff's okay with it. It does kind of go against some of the sign ordinance stuff that we have, because it's a nice-looking sign. So I mean, I, I can give you a 25, a 45, I... I, yeah, I get a little hesitant about going that tall.
And just to be clear, we only have the 25-foot, so really, we should focus the discussion on what the 25-foot is. I know that applicant wants to get a sneak peek at the 45, but we should focus on what the comments are on the 25.
Okay, I agree with that. So what does the commission think? I am in agreement with Commissioner Doty on this. 45-foot, that's kind of over the top. But I agree with the 25-foot, and I like to move forward on that.
Go ahead.
A motion that we approve the 25-foot sign?
I agree with you, the 25, yeah. And we'll discuss the 45 when it comes to force.
Can we get a motion and the resolution, please?
Okay, a motion that we adopt resolution PC 16-250, approving plot plan number 2015-237 for the signage for the ARCO AM/PM gas station and convenience store.
Do we have a second?
I make a second.
I'll do a roll call vote.
Could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes. I'd like to close the public hearing.
That'll move you to item 10 on the agenda, discussion items.
Okay.
And we have no discussion items tonight.
Item 11, Community Development Director comments?
No comments, just look forward to working with all the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Glad to have you aboard, by the way. Do we have any commissioner reports on committee activities or other activities?
No, but I would like to ask Jonathan, can you give us a two-second update on the overpasses and what's going on, and status, and funding, and that kind of thing?
Sure, that's a very, very broad attempt at capturing all the CIP projects. Is that Scott or just Newport?
On, I'm sorry, Newport, Holland, overpass, and Scott.
So the city manager and the engineering team are working on those three projects extensively, looking at opportunities for funding the projects. And we're, we're working through those details. And I'm sure the city manager will be updating everyone here shortly on those endeavors. But on the engineering side, we're, we've met with the District 8 director. I had a very good meeting with him, and...
That Caltrans district?
Yes, Caltrans District 8 director to discuss Holland and Scott Road interchange projects, and kind of gaining his opinions on ways of accelerating those projects. The Bradley Bridge is, we're focusing on that and getting that done in a timely fashion, too. As we've seen in the recent rains, it's, it's a much-needed project. And we are in the midst of negotiating with the Riverside County Flood Control District and going through their iterations of looking at hydrology and hydraulics and trying to decide on what queue we're going to design the bridge to accommodate. But I don't want to get into too many of those details. But I can tell you that each of those three projects are moving very, very well and on a very timely schedule.
So what's the, obviously Newport Road is in process.
Uh huh.
But what about Holland? Do we have a projected start date on the overpass?
Holland is, is very much on schedule. We'll, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to start work on some pieces of Holland Road, just as we did on the Newport interchange. We'll be doing the same thing with Holland.
Do you know approximately when they'll be breaking ground on anything, any part of it?
Well, I, I don't have any specific dates right now, but I don't be surprised not to see anything start this year.
Okay.
So some work should be this year.
What happened with Kaiser, Murieta approved the Kaiser, and kind of irregardless of the mitigation going on that should have gone on with Menifee? So are they, did they have to contribute to the Scott Road interchange because of that?
That was the, the point of my letter to them was to bring to their attention that they should be participating in the solutions for the Scott Road interchange. However, they, with the support of their professionals, decided not to. And that's why the letter, the two letters were lengthy and describing the reasons why they were wrong and were right. And so they are just not doing their part as a good neighbor, I believe, in participating in that, in that project.
Is, is the state or the county going to require out of that eventually, like, a Keller Road off-ramp for that or anything? Is that in the works, or is that like down the road at all?
So...
That was initially planned there?
Murieta had approached the Caltrans with the idea of constructing a interchange at Keller Road. Keller Road is currently, Keller Road currently goes under the 215. So it would significantly change the geometrics in that area for that connection, which we showed that it wasn't really supported by Caltrans. However, they are holding firm to the fact that they have approval by Caltrans, which we have not, in our discussions with Caltrans, been made aware of. So we've met, I've met independently with Caltrans to express our concerns and to shed, to show them the information that we're being provided. And it's, there's some questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, John, when's the bridge demolition anticipated?
Bridge demolition, we're hoping will be around May. Could be sooner depending upon weather. We'll see.
About the Newport, the older side?
Yeah, the southbound bridge is going to be demoed, and then all traffic will run on the north, north, north bridge as we construct the southerly bridge.
Do we have any other comments? Any other commissioner reports or anything else? Okay. Mr. Turner, you have anything? You have anything?
And I'll move to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll second that one.
Do we have a...
All in, you just do a voice vote.
Are we...
Just all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is...
Aye. The meeting is adjourned at seven thirty PM. Like to thank everybody for their attendance and, more importantly, for their support. Thanks.